To call this meeting order, please silence your cell phones and stand for the invitation given by a council member by a council.
Thank you. Everyone just bow your heads. I'm going to read this, and I think it's appropriate for the times. Heavenly Father, thank you for every seat that has been filled here today. For each mind and heart that fills the presence of this room, we thank you. Only you truly know what we are setting out to accomplish today. We have an idea, a vision, hence, and daily instructions. We have talents, abilities, and time to work. However, only you can see in perfect detail the end of every beginning. Every project, every season, every life, nothing is ever in vain, for even mistakes and missteps are used for good. Your righteousness transcends all our efforts and understanding. Forgive us for our pride, the pride that puffs us up and the pride that threatens to unqualify us. Strengthen our confidence in who you have made us to be. Set us free from comparison in order to work together efficiently. Bless this meeting today, all those present, as well as the lives of those who will encounter afterward. Ready to make every moment count, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Communications?
The Genesee County Youth Bureau is looking to hold their summer carnival on Thursday, July 28th. This will be 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the ICE Arena.
Any questions or concerns on that? Okay, next one.
And Kelly's Holland Inn submitted a liquor license application, and there was no objection from the police department.
Any questions or concerns on that?
That's all.
The next city council conference and business meeting will be held Monday, August 8th, 2022, 7:00 PM, City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor. And if Mr. Owen would step up to the front here, please. I told you there was more coming.
I haven't seen you.
I told you there was more coming. Step over here.
Thank you.
Just want to read something.
Wait a minute, I can't see you.
Step around over here. That's your director.
That's right.
Whereas Jim Owen grew up with his family on Redfield Park, where in the city of Batavia, and has met, made Redfield Parkway a part of his life for the last 79 years. And whereas he was born the son of Frank and Natalie Walker Owen, who worked for the city of Batavia School District and lived on Redfield Parkway, sharing their home with Jim's siblings Kathy and Robert. And whereas Jim graduated from Batavia in 1961, attended college at Morrisville Institute of Technology and later Rochester Institute of Technology, he was first hired as a teacher in Sagits Harbor, and later by Hamburg Central Schools, where he enjoyed his work in coaching cross-country for 34 years.
Thirty-five now.
Thirty-five. Whereas in 23, after retirement from Hamburg Central Schools, Jim returned to his childhood home and to Redfield Parkway, and Jim immediately got to work substituting at the Batavia schools and assisting with all things Redfield Parkway. Those who know Jim and the city call him Mayor, Jim was named the mayor of Redfield Parkway because he participates in activities for Redfield Parkway and acts as an ambassador for the community at many events. Whereas Jim loves Redfield Parkway and has continued to work hard after his sister Kathy passed on, keep the Parkway's tradition alive. Jim has a great sense of humor, but takes his volunteerism and community service seriously, and is an integral part of the spirit of the city of Batavia. Today, the city of Batavia recognizes Jim Owen for his many years of dedicated service within the city and the Redfield neighborhood, and be it now resolved that the city council of Batavia hereby extends a proclamation of Jim Owen for his dedication and service to the city of Batavia and names him the...
Mayor of Redfield Parkway.
(audience cheering)
My sister is the queen of Redfield Parkway. We really get all the work. I got quite a bit of the credit. One day, your beautiful council sent us a letter saying that we were the homeowner of the year. Well, they just sent it to me. I said, I gotta get on the phone and call them, because I'm loving your life. So I called them, make sure her name is first, and then you can throw my name in there. And then three years later, we got the same letter, and she said, no way, there's gotta be 15,000 other homes in Batavia, and we obviously declined. I thought that was very nice of you folks, but she was the spearhead, and she kept everything. I just took all the credit today. My parents, I just want to mention very simply a little history, they, of course, bought the place in 1930, and maybe I can get my sus valuation back to what they paid.
Highly unlikely.
But another piece of history, our home owners, two Redfields, but in actuality gets four Redfields, because two Redfields was owned by a very common lady in town. And the question is, where would the girl have to close me, at her place of business or at the attorney's office? My mother suggested the attorney's office, and the lady was named Edna Gruber Reeves. Now, maybe some of you young folks would remember that name, but she was the madam in Batavia. And what was interesting, I can't imagine my father walking out of that place with a sign, but I do...
Especially he was there to just close the house.
That's right. But I do have her signature.
Wow.
It was just not... Of course, where was the signature? On the deed. So I just give you a little history there, but I just wanted to thank the town council, the administrators. A little brief history of the first mayor of the city of Batavia was Dr. Harvey Burka. He also was the last mayor of the village of Batavia, 1915, in Keenwood City. And then, of course, the last mayor was Herman Gabriel. He was the last, he worked at Gibson's, he was the last mayor.
I think 57?
Fifty-four, I think 57 is when we had the first administrator.
Yes.
And I think you folks will get a kick out of this. His name was C. Richard Foote. A kick out of this, okay.
I remember.
I remember. Really a landmark type of situation. And now we have a tremendous city administrator. Hats off to the young lady.
She's right here.
Yes.
With her state.
Mayor.
Yeah. She looks so much younger. I just want to congratulate you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, C. Councilor.
Hope I did okay.
Thank you.
Okay, the SRO contract.
I don't know if I can follow that.
It's a kind of a...
Yeah, let me just, okay. So as council is aware, we renewed the SRO contract with the school district in April of 2022. However, the school district has expressed an interest in adding an additional officer to the SRO program. The terms of the contract remain exactly the same, where we would provide two officers. They will be full-time city Batavia law enforcement officers, and they, the school district will reimburse the city 100% of the officer's salaries and benefits, including overtime, actually worked. We remain responsible for providing a vehicle, uniform, training, and equipment for both of these individuals. And the SRO's salary and benefits are billed quarterly and then reconciled at the end of the year. So we're asking for city council to approve the additional officer and an SRO position.
And you'll notice in the sample contract is all the additions and changes are in red. So basically, it's just semantics changing SRO to plural and adding other some minor details. If you've looked this over, you're confident it's a pretty safe contract for us to involve ourselves in?
It's consistent with the last version that we worked up at the school, so it's just added additional.
Okay. Any more questions or concerns about that?
Has the school board voted on this yet?
I believe they have. We did receive a signed contract today.
Either way, we get to pay. We pay school taxes or city taxes, so, you know, unfortunate.
So at this point, we'd be moving that to tonight's business meeting, because this is summer meeting schedule.
And thank you, council president. Just to note, every item you see on here tonight, I am asking that it be moved to the business meeting, because we do not have a second meeting in July. It is the summer schedule.
And three of the business meetings were from previous conference meetings, and they'll go above the ones we moved today.
Right.
Okay, so are we consensus to move that to tonight's meeting?
Yes.
Is that the new ice rink operator agreement?
I am extremely pleased to present an ice rink operator agreement. The city issued a public RFP for prospective operators. We received three responses back, and the proposals were scored not only by members of city staff, the city attorney, but we had the Genesee County Chamber President, Eric Fixx, and Mark Staley as outsiders also score the proposals. And one proposal stood out in a way of how they were going to reinvent the rink, what type of activities they were going to bring back to the rink, and what type of investment they were willing to make in excess of $100,000 in the first five years of their own money. So tonight, we have with us Matt Gray from Batavia Sports Facility Management, who is the proposal that we are recommending to move forward with. Some of the highlights of the proposal include the rent and capital scheduled to the city directly, as well as the commitment to invest in the rink as the operator in a multitude of projects. Matt, as many of you know, has been a stable business owner here in the city with Alex's and then getting into the development of the Eli Fish, the building, and then the apartments. He owns other businesses down in North Carolina, and his hockey has been a hockey family, his family has been a hockey family, for a very, very long time. I think this proposal will create a sense of relationship with Gaha and the other users at the rink, where communication will be open, and we'll see even more participation in that sports and other areas for the rink. The contract is for five years. The operation agreement is for five years with three five-year renewals. So at this point, I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions?
Well, I just want to say that this is, I looked over the contract, this is fantastic. It's good to see local people interested in the rink. And I was fortunate enough to coach with Mr. Gray, and it's a great family, and to see him over there, and he's got Bob Gray insurance, so I think this is going to be a win-win for the city, Batavia, for the taxpayers, and for the kids. Excuse me, I haven't got my voice back, but...
Because baseball games are killing you, Paulie.
It's so exciting. Right, Chief? This is fantastic. Yes.
George, you comfortable with the contract? I mean, you've looked it over, and you're comfortable with the wording and everything? No sneaky clauses, right?
Sneaky clauses, otherwise we wouldn't have fun. It's consistent with what we had in terms of the firm agreement with some changes and updates to account for the new operator. And it's not just a lease arrangement relative to the space, it's an operation agreement. So that's something to bear in mind, is that the facility operator is responsible for operating it with the program, with the requirements, with the other users of the facility.
It's not just a full control over the building, it's a whole operation and building control.
Correct.
George, maybe you can answer, but it's very little stated about the parking lot in here. Who's responsible for maintenance of the parking lot, keeping the parking lot clean?
City parking lot?
Yes.
Otherwise, I have to say it's responsible, or else it's not removal, I think of that sort.
And if there is, and I'm...
I think, I think the parking lot was included in the lease, so I thought I saw mention of that. I just, you know, if we specify everything and make it real clear, it's to solve problems later. I hate to see Mr. Gray, if somebody, maybe everybody will be different here, and they're saying, well, you have to repave the parking lot now.
No, I mean, as a tenant, basically, there are specific responsibilities for them to maintain, they're spelled out on appendix B. The bricks and mortar are subject to the ours responsibilities to maintain the structure.
And I also agree with Paul. I mean, I'm just happy, it's hard to see somebody local taking it on, and, you know, the people are all good people, and they're... Mr. Gray Senior is excited too, and he gave me a tour here recently, and he was showing me everything they already were doing, and it's great. It's just great to see community involvement in here.
Thank you. Anyone else? So are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting?
Yes.
Residency requirement?
Thank you, council president. As council is aware, the city of Batavia announced the appointment of Eric Fixx to the position of assistant city manager for the city this previous week. He was selected after following an extensive search for candidates in the recruitment period. You've all seen Mr. Fixx's resume and all his positive accolades. He's here tonight to say hello. Thank you for coming, Eric. And I am asking for a waiver so that he can continue at this time to live in Leroy with his family while his children finish out high school. So this would be a residency waiver.
Any questions? Sir? Welcome aboard, Mr. Fixx, and, you know, I'm really happy you're taking this on. This is strictly the manager's appointment, we have nothing to do with the appointment. We did speak about the residency. Myself personally, I like to see anybody getting a paycheck from the city, living in the city. That way, when you go home at 5:00, you still have to live with the consequences. But I hope someday you consider it. I understand your family and everything, all that, so just welcome aboard. Thank you.
I'm kind of excited about it. We have another situation where we have a Batavian native, lifelong Genesee County resident. His resume, he's very, very involved in the community at this point. No, he doesn't live here, but he's very, very involved in the community, and he's currently the president of the Chamber of Commerce, and I think this, we're excited about it. We're very, it's great, it's great.
I think you have Mr. Fixx on our team as a home run, a job reach.
Thank you, absolutely.
Any other questions or concerns? So are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting?
Yes.
Is that the move? Main Street Anchor Grant?
Yes. The resolution you have before you is to support the submission of a New York Main Street Program Anchor Grant for the theater here in city center owned by Kenny Mitzler. The project has been ongoing since the pandemic. He has done some renovations inside, but this grant would really help propel him to finalize the project. He's looking to take one of the theaters and keep it as a movie theater, and the second venue to have more of musicians, jazz, and bands, not just local bands, but ones that are brought in. And he's also looking to add a bar and concessionary food type stand area. I was able to go in and tour the facility. He has started renovations, but it certainly would be helpful if he could obtain this grant through the New York Main Street Program. The bid is the entity that the grant would pass through, and they would be the administrators, but you can't access these grant funds without your municipality's support.
So you're looking for just endorsement from us to help bid to apply for the grant?
Yep. You hereby enthusiastically support the submission of the grant application.
Yeah, I'm excited about this project. I toured the facility also, and Mr. Mitzler has a one heck of a great idea, and I think he's probably the first person around here that's ever come up with it. He's going to, from 1:00 till 4:00, have events for seniors, and not just, not just Batavia seniors, different senior living areas, like Rochester and Buffalo, where they can get a bus and come down, old movies, like Soup and a Sandwich special, and because he's, you know, he's facing reality, and he's noticed a lot of seniors have nothing to do in the afternoon. Absolutely, everything's either in the morning, lunch, or in the evening, and it'd be great use of one of the, you know, the one facility. So I think he's on the right track, and I'd like to see this move forward myself. Thank you.
Are we consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting?
Yes.
Where are we, Detective?
Thank you, council president. I'm requesting that we move forward a resolution to utilize $12,000 of administrative reserves. The current balance is $486,000 at this time. We had saved up a lot of funding while working through the ERP software program, but we do need to upgrade our firewalls, and at this point, this project would upgrade two, two firewalls, one at the police station and one at city center.
Any questions or concerns? Are we in consensus then to move this to the business meeting?
Yes.
Mall Roof Closeout?
Yep, and I'll let Brett Frank update you on this proposal.
Yeah, so we have Mall Roof 2 closeout in use of its facility reserve for overage. Basically, what we had happen in the finishing of Mall Roof 2 is Grove Roofing went in to do the project. Basically, they opened it up and discovered what's called phenolic acid, deteriorated a bunch of metal decking and structural portion of the roof itself. That caused a roughly $54,000 overage from the original contract price, which, once that was opened up, we had no way of knowing that that was going to be the case, but had to address it. That cost was reviewed by Kent Pearl Architectural Unlimited, as well as recommended by him to get that done and taken care of, so that overage should be taken care of through the use of facility reserves in the amount of about $54,000.
So the roof is complete now?
Yes, it is.
The portion that was lost?
Yes, correct.
Are all the buckets gone?
Buckets are gone, yeah.
Except in the, wait, wait, except in the silo areas, because we still have...
We're kind of a little bit out right now, so of course...
Yes. Yes, exactly.
When it's ready, will the buckets be there against the question?
No, no.
We have warranties if they are.
Yes, we have a 20-year warranty on it, and we have to keep a log of every time somebody goes up, inspects it, and we've started a log for that as well. We've got a copy of the warranty, and they've been fantastic. When we did have a question, they went right up, addressed it for us, so growth's been very good work with.
Is the warranty the manufacturer, or the...
Yep.
Okay, any other questions? So are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Hope you do it here. Mr. Beal, second to my, Mr. Nally, elder oldies?
Councilmember Beal?
Yes.
Castillo?
Yes.
McNally?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Jake Housekey?
Yes.
Can you now call it ordered, business meeting? You've had a copy of the May 2022 financials included in your packet. Any questions or concerns on those? Okay, are we in consensus to approve the May 2022 financials?
Yep.
These are approved? You've also had a copy of the June 2022 minutes. Any concerns, omissions, corrections you'd like to make? Are we in consensus to approve those minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Agenda items. Number 60, 2022, the national grids lights in the city. Mr. Castillo? Number 61, 2022, for the green innovation grant program for the water meter upgrade. Mr. McGinnis? 62, 2022, the C grid by two action for water meter upgrade project. Mr. Richmond? 63, 2022, the school resource officer agreement. Mr. Schmidt? 64, 2022, the rink agreement. Mr. Beal? 65, 2022, the residency requirement. Miss Briggs? 66, 2022, the New York Main Street Grant. Mr. Jake Housekey? 67, 2022, firewall software. Command? And 68, 2022, the resolution to amend the budget reserve, I believe that's the mall thing, right?
The last resolution is the change order for the mall roof. Yes, correct.
Who wants that? Mr. Beal?
Before we get into Redfields, yes, since we're under your business, I did have a question for the city manager.
Sure.
It has to do with the property on Swan Street, the old ward, Plow Building. That's been going iron and oak for at least eight years, since I've been involved. It's falling down, the bricks are falling down on the top, the bricks are falling down on the bottom. You have a fence that's falling down, that's leaning up against the building, that's protecting nothing, and even though it's falling down, it doesn't even surround the building.
Yes.
Where are we with that?
So as far as I can recollect, we have, I'm going to say ordered it demolished, or that we've gotten consent from the owner that it will be demolished, but I'll have to get back to you in an email, and I can copy in all of council. But I know it was cited, I know we've worked with the owners, we've asked for the fencing to be put up, and you're right, the fencing continually is an issue that we have to ask them to remedy and tighten up.
Mr. Gray, are there any concerns, if you're over my head in there, comes down on their head, see if we have all of this stuff in place, but it seems that's everything is slow, like everything else is slow, but thank you for the opportunity.
Yep, absolutely.
Chief? City attorneys report?
Yes, since we reported on matters last, we have continued to work on a variety of matters across the spectrum, ranging from contracts, claim matters, general municipal matters, the tax foreclosure filings, general research, as well as counsel to the various departments for the city, but there's nothing specific to report on at this time.
Any questions for the city manager? City manager report?
Yes, thank you. I hope you all received your June, July updates, and I'll just go through a couple of the highlights. Our EnerGov software for the building department is live, being used by members of this inspection team even out in the field. So again, it's still a new software, there's still kinks to be worked out. We are looking to bring utility billing software and EnerGov software for online bill pay in the fall, if we can get all the components and pieces of that. We even have options where you can pay with Venmo and other app opportunities, so I think we're really excited, Heidi's excited. The administrative department is working on the 2122 audit right now, with field work last week and this week. There was an application from Seneca Power Partners that was received by the DEC. The city, along with the county and town, opposed the application to allow them to draw raw water from the aquifer. As you can all see, there are water restrictions in place right now. Please don't water your lawn, even if it's completely brown. But yeah, we are having a hard time keeping up at the plant, as we have for the last few years, and in the summer months and during this mini drought season, it's really important that we can serve and do what we can to save water. Lead line service replacements, there's going to be a mailer going out to all households asking citizens to self-report their lines inside their homes, where actually Brett and Michael are going to be doing a video to explain the difference in the pipes, and the mailer will have a website and a QR code, and once you report what service you have in your home, and I will preface this with, our guys and gals that work in water have never seen lead inside the home, it's quite astounding. But we do need to document this all, and it will upload directly to a GIS web map that we'll be publishing, so the citizens can see either the homeowner's side or the city's side, and what's lead and what's not, and that leads to anticipation of grant funds from the federal government. We're hoping on congressional member item funding to do any lead line replacement we have to do throughout the city in basically the next decade. So we do want to remove as much lead pipe as possible throughout the city, and that's all in preparation of us shutting down the city's water plant, bringing in Monroe County water, which will have a different hydrology, and we want to make sure that we're not stirring up any lead in anyone's pipes, and it's much healthier to get the lead pipes out of homes if they are in fact there. Mall Roof 2 project completed, police roof is nearly completed. Nearly? It's done, all right. Check that one off. The mall DRI, we have initial drawings by Hunt Engineers as they went through the project. It was supposed to encompass more than just the silos. We wanted to do flooring and painting inside the mall area, and the original DRI project asked to do micro kiosk type space for vendors. After looking at the construction prices and inflation, we are honing the project back to try to at least do all of the silo entrances at this time, so that design is underway. We hope to share that. So that design is underway, we hope to share that with the public session and with the mall merchants before we go out to bid on the project. The last two things, just I feel you should be aware of, is myself, Brett Frank, and Michael Ficarella are continuing to meet with the Town of Batavia regarding their current sewer use permit, and we're beginning to negotiate another purchase capacity agreement. Right now, they have purchased from the city 850,000 gallons per day, but because of the discharge of HP Hood, they're well in excess of that. So we need to remedy that situation through a purchase agreement, and then we're starting to do planning with the town for the future to make sure we do have capacity for our large industries here, such as Awaka, and then any type of business they may want to bring in. So that is ongoing. And then lastly, Restore New York Grants were just released out of the Governor's Office. This program has been very successful across the state. We used it here with Tom Mancuso's project at The Harvester, and as far as I'm aware, the Healthy Living Campus and the Cars Building are interested in applying, and they will need municipal support to do that, so you may see a resolution in August to that regard. Any questions?
Just a couple of questions. While we're on that topic, I heard you mention that the old Cars Building?
Yes.
I know, I believe Kenny Mitzler owned it, I assume he still does.
Still does.
He was granted some money at one point. Just wondering where we're at with that, as far as the progress of that, what his intentions are timeframe-wise?
I can tell you that he's brought on a project manager, Dave Sersinski, who's also managing other DRI projects on the construction and overseeing the engineering. They had an initial feasibility in engineering done, so they are working through that, and they're looking at how much can be done with the funds they have, how much owner equity will go into the project, but they are advancing it and moving it forward, so.
Second question, reverse, back to the mall silos.
Sure.
What's our, this is a twofold question, what's our timeframe to get that project completed? And do we have tentative plans to accomplish the other goals that were in that original package?
Yes and yes. Timeframe is, we hope that we can finalize design documents in the next four to five months, have the project out to bid, and then construction happening in the winter, spring, summer of next year. That's if everything stays on schedule, that's if bid pricings come in and we can accept them, we've been through that all. So that, that would be the timeframe. We're really pleased with Hunt Engineers.
Absolutely.
They seem to understand that there's only so much money in the project, and we need to get certain things out of the project per the settlement agreement we have with the merchants. And first and foremost, we've done the roof, now we need to do the silos. For the interior, I'm also looking to see if the city would qualify for a Restore New York Grant, because even though we're not a developer of a project, or we're not a private sector entity, we do have all the common space with the mall merchants. So that's one avenue of grant funding, also looking at National Grid. But yes, we also can put more money into our facilities reserve if we need to at the end of the audit, if the audit comes out well. But yeah, there's definitely projects that can be done, even right now. I believe they're ripping out the panels that are above there, so they're exposing the metal decking now, and just changing the look and making it, like each little improvement, just like the ice rink, makes it look a little bit better, and it'll draw more people in to use it. We walked around there today with the Department of State, Secretary of State, and there was just 20 or 30 kids down there at the, doing a theater camp, just using the concourse, and it'd be nice to see us get back to that someday.
And we've also seen some activity with some small businesses, purchasing some of the property in the mall, moving in, so we're starting to see a little bit of activity again in the mall, which again, just draws other businesses in that might want to be, I mean, if it ends up being mostly a professional complex, that means there's opportunity for some restaurants in there, things like that, so that could possibly start to morph itself.
Absolutely.
I'm anxious to see the interior, some kind of a revamp of the interior.
Yeah, they call it the Burger King floor, when you get past it. It looks like every, all the old 1980s Burger Kings.
But the entranceways are key, because...
They are.
If you're not going to get past that entranceway, you're not coming in.
And that's the biggest...
We got to put the priorities, the roof was number one, now the silos are number two, and then we can work on the interior as we get all the leaking stopped, and the, whatever the entranceways problem was, now we can get on the inside, do that in winter or any time of year, really.
And I just want to make sure that we continue to pursue that.
Yeah, for sure. Anyone else?
Yes, I have a very quick question. On the west side of CL Car Company, there is what was supposed to be a dentist's office, and it seems to be well boarded up, as they were fixing it. Is that fallen through or something?
On the west side of...
Ninety-nine, ninety-nine.
Oh. Oh, it just seems to be taking a very long time.
Well, the original contractor that was on that project actually passed away, and his father had to take over the company, so there's been a few delays in that, but that project is still...
Longest is still going, that's all I wanted to know.
Thank you, because I noticed that today, it looked like it was kind of... Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, committee reports?
Oh, please. Just to remind you for your calendars, August 20th, this is Saturday, and from 1:00 to 9:00, everybody will be on South Side of Batavia at the Italian Festival. All the restaurants in town that do Italian food are coming through, and some are doing desserts, and some are doing giant meatballs, and they're doing wonderful things. There will be music, there will be activities for children, it's wonderful, so put it on your calendar for August 20th. The very next week, on August 27th, early in the morning, there will be a boxcar derby going down Alloca Avenue for the first time in many, many years, and it's very exciting. Prior to that, you can go and get your kit, and they'll even show you how to put it together. So it all goes through bid, thank you.
Any questions on any of that? Where is the agenda for words that can help write it out?
Yes, right in that square, and around there.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? I do, just to see how it is.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to authorize acquisition of National Grid Lights in the City of Batavia, and request National Grid prepare a purchase and sale agreement.
Second by Mr. McGinnis? Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beal?
Yes.
Resolution 61, 2022, Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to submit a consolidated funding application, Green Innovation Grant Program for a Water Meter Upgrade Project.
Second by Mr. Canaly? Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beal?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 62, 2022, Mr. Richmond, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to require C grid type 2 action for Water Meter Upgrade Project.
Second by Mr. Beal? Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beal?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Resolution 63, 2022, Mr. Schmidt, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to enter into a School Resource Officer Agreement with the Batavia City School District for another School Resource Officer.
Second by Mr. Canaly? Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beal?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Resolution 64, 2022, Mr. Beal, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution authorizing the execution of an ice rink lease agreement in Batavia Sports Facility Management LLC.
Second by Ms. Briggs? Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beal?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Resolution 65, 2022, Mr. Briggs, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to waive residency requirement.
Second by Mr. Canaly? Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beal?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Resolution 66, 2022, Mr. Byakowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to support the submission of a New York State Main Street Grant Application by the Batavia Business Improvement District.
Second by Mr. Schmidt? Any questions or concern? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beal?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Resolution 67, 2022, Mr. Canaly, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to authorize the use of administrative reserves to purchase new firewall software.
Second by Mr. McGinnis? Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beal?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
And Resolution 68, 2022, Mr. Beal, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to amend the 2223 budget reserve and expense accounts and to authorize a change order.
Second by Mr. Canaly? Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beal?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond? Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
And if you take this into executive session, please.
Indeed. Whereas Article 7, Section 105.1b of the Public Affairs Law permits the legislative body of the municipality to enter into executive session to discuss a proposed pending or current litigation, now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Batavia that upon approval of this motion, the City Council must hereby enter into executive session.
Second by Ms. Briggs? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Pacino?